Meeting is now called to order. Today is Wednesday, September 15th, and it is 6:30 PM. Can we all please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and prayer? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bauerhead, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we've come today asking for your guidance and decisions that we have to make for our city. Please bless us, give us the right frame of mind. Please bless and watch over all of our first responders in our city. And we ask these prayers in your name. Amen.
So we have a quorum. Like all councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Giles. Next on the agenda is comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. I would like to start off by giving a congratulation to our clerk, Kathy Walton, who tomorrow will be celebrating 25 years with the city.
Wow.
Thank you so much for your service. Any other councilors? Okay, seen none.
Madam President.
Yes, Council Russell.
I just would like to recognize and just to ask the council to please keep in their prayers, Chaplain Mel Keaton, he had a health condition and a heart attack this past week, and he is doing fine, but I had heard from the chief and just wanted to make sure since he's a part of the Lawrence family that we all keep him in our prayers, please.
Thank you, Council Russell. He will certainly be in our thoughts and prayers. Any other council members? Okay, seen none. Next on the agenda is update on stormwater by Director of Engineering, Sri.
Thank you, Madam President and respected council members. Sri Venugopalan, City Engineer, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk about the future of Stormwater Program in Lawrence and what you'll be seeing from me in the next few months regarding stormwater. So as you are aware, we have started collecting revenue for stormwater starting last year, and we have been able to do some minor repairs as they come up, but that's just the tip of the iceberg. We have identified roughly 12 projects that are critically in our master plan that needs to be completed to address a lot of the drainage issues that's happening all over the city. Not just, I mean, some of that is on the west side, but I would say that there is some on the east side, that is all over the city that is. And if you are in my office on a day after a rain, you will see the number of calls we receive about this. And some of them, we send the contractor out to fix it, but some of them are major projects, and that's why these dozen projects came up on the master plan. So in the next month or two, I'm thinking, I'm guessing it's in the month of November after the budget, we will, I will be coming to you for approval of a stormwater bond. And I don't want to scare anybody with the term bond. This is a pretty straightforward, simple revenue bond. All we are doing is borrowing money from our future revenues when the interest rates are really low. And this, when I say low, it's around 2.5% to 3.5%, which is still very low for interest rates. So we are, you know, every year we are getting like close to 1.7, 1.8 million from revenues. We're going to use that revenue and borrow money in the, from the future revenues to do some of these projects in the next three to four years. And the reason we are, I'm trying to do that is that if you, if you want to come ride with me on some of these areas, these are infrastructure, these are areas where there are sinkholes developing every day. We fixed one, there is another one in the neighborhood. So there is a lot of crumbling infrastructure. Part of the reason is some of them are having been addressed for the last 30 years, some of the areas doesn't have any storm sewer infrastructure at all, and it's flooding. And, you know, people have a reason to complain about it is because nothing has been done. So now we have an opportunity with this consistent revenue we're going to get from the stormwater to bond some of that revenue and get a good portion of the money and start doing some of these projects, and also keep some revenue for our yearly maintenance. It's not like we're going to spend all the revenue on, on projects and we won't have anything. We are, the way, when, when the controller comes to you in the next month or two with this plan proposal, the way it is laid out is even after we pay the bond, we'll have a close to half a million dollars if not more for any yearly projects or like unforeseen projects that will come up and that we have to address. So again, there is no property tax rate increases, there is no stormwater rate increases. All we are doing is borrowing money from our future revenues and help fix some of the crumbling infrastructure. If you don't do it now, in five years, with the amount of rain going up every year, this problem is not going down. This is going to go up significantly, up every year. So in another five years, we'll be spending double the money to fix some of this. And some of the areas that, that are listed as projects, they are in dire need of some improvements, which is more than a point repair of a manhole or like a small piece of pipe. So I just wanted to be here today and give you like enough, a lot of notice and be very clear about and transparent about what our plans are, so you don't hear it on the day after the bond or, you know, through an email. And, you know, make sure that you have some time between now and then to ask questions about any, any projects you have. And some of these projects will include hybrid ditches, you know, green infrastructure. Some of this will include new, new storm sewer pipes underground. Some of this will include retention basins in city properties to help collect some of this water. So this is a great program, and I put a lot of effort into that to come up with this program. And I hope that, you know, when it comes to you for approval, you know, you'll ask the right questions, and hopefully I can answer it right and help me pass this bond and we can get this project started next year and up and running.
I think it would be nice if we could get a list of the 12 projects, you know.
Absolutely. Good timing. The part of the bond process is we are going to have a special bond, a stormwater bond, stormwater board meeting in October 4th. The whole purpose of the meeting is by law, we have to publish these projects. So I have the projects all listed. I got it from my consultant yesterday with the name of the project, the area, and the cost. So I'll be more than happy to distribute it to the whole group. Like I said, perfect timing, and I thought like, oh, well, I knew that it's going to be, you're going to ask that question. So, so you will see that list from me tomorrow.
Okay.
And like I said, as part of the law, you know, statute is we have to publish those projects. If, depending on where the projects come in, you know, we are going to ask for a not-to-exceed amount. And part of, one thing I want to point out is, we are not looking, we are always looking out for grants and funding opportunities. So maybe we get some bond money and we can use that to leverage some additional matching grants for next year's stormwater. You know, there is always some programs that come up where we can go after some grants. Most of the time, there is a match of $500,000 through state for some stormwater projects, but we still need to figure out the rest of the project. So we, my hope is to leverage some of this to get more grant money as we, you know, look into the planning process of these projects.
Okay. Great.
I'm happy to answer any questions or?
Yep. Well, I think you getting us prepared for what's coming down the road is, is very much appreciated, and we'll just look forward to getting the list of projects and the estimates and, and maybe make sure we have you come back.
Sure.
The first meeting in October, and the council can look over what you've sent and be prepared for any questions.
Absolutely.
That they might have. Does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah, I'll send you the list of projects tomorrow.
Okay.
And the map.
Thank you, Sri.
Thank you.
Are you going to, Sri, are you going to send it to me and I'll send it to the council? Next on the agenda, signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Make the motion. Motion, Council Reeler, second, Councilman Freeman?
Yes.
Who was the first? Russell. Any discussion? We'll need to do a roll call vote because we have two councilors participating remotely. Council Russell?
Aye.
Council Freeman?
Aye.
Council Wells?
Yes.
Council Rusa Moroff?
Yes.
Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Council Chavis?
Yes.
Councilor Chevlat?
Yes.
Councilor Denny?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have unfinished business, proposal number nine, 2021.
Proposal number nine, 2021, introduced by Council Rusa Moroff. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, amending the Lawrence Municipal Code to establish an always-stop intersection at Bogie Drive, Half Mile Drive, and High Grass Lane.
Okay, that's in code. Next, we have proposal number 10, 2021.
Proposal number 10, 2021, introduced by Council Wells. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, amending the Lawrence Municipal Code regarding requirements for city towing providers.
That's in code as well. Next, we have proposal number 12, 2021.
Proposal number 12, 2021, introduced by Council Russell. A proposal for an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the 2022 budget year.
Okay, that's in finance. Proposal number 13, 2021.
Proposal number 13, 2021, introduced by Council Russell. A proposal for an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2022.
That's in finance as well. Next, we have proposal number 14, 2021.
Proposal number 14, 2021, introduced by Council Russell. A proposal for an ordinance establishing compensation for elected officials of the city of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2022.
That's in finance as well. Next, we have proposal number 15, 2021.
Proposal number 15, 2021, introduced by Council Russell. A proposal for an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the police department and the fire department for the year 2022.
That's in finance as well. Next, we have new business. Consideration of council appointment to the utility service board. So we will need to open it up for any recommendations for this board appointment?
This is to replace someone whose term is up, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Correct. Term is up. I would like to recommend Tracy Boyd, who is currently serving on the USB and has been for the past three years. She's, she's done an admirable job, I think, representing us, and she's.
That's whose term is up.
Yeah, she's agreed to continue to serve on that board, and she's joined us by video as well. Are there any other nominations? I said, any other nominations? Okay, seen none. Nominations are closed. So we will have a roll call vote. So just yea or nay. Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Freeman?
Yes.
Council Wells?
Yes.
Council Rusa Moroff?
Yes.
Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Council Chavis?
Yes.
Councilor Chevlat?
Yes.
Councilor Denny?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Ms. Boyd, for your willingness to serve. We, we appreciate you, and we appreciate your presence and all you do to serve our city. Congratulations for another term.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, President Chavis. I appreciate the opportunity to serve the citizens of Lawrence, and I'm looking forward to continuing in that capacity.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Next, we have consideration of council appointment for the Lawrence Plan Commission, which I'm going to table. Next, we have consideration of council appointment to the BZA alternate. And this is a, replacing a board member. Ms. Amber Denny, is there a nomination for BZA alternate?
And President, I'd like to recommend Trace Yates.
Okay. Trace Yates has been nominated. Any more nominations for BZA alternate? Okay, seen none. Nominations are closed. We will have a roll call vote. Council Russell?
Yes.
Council Freeman?
Yes.
Council Wells?
Yes.
Council Rusa Moroff?
Yes.
Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Council Chavis?
Yes.
Councilor Chevlat?
Yes.
Councilor Denny?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous, and I'm not sure if Mr. Yates is with us, but if he is not, on behalf of the council, we'd like to thank you for your willingness to serve as a BZA alternate. Next on the agenda is resolution number 16, 2021, which is going to be tabled to a future meeting. Okay, now we will, we will have a presentation from Baker Tilly. So if you could please come forward. This council retained the services of Baker Tilly to look at actual and projected cash flows for the period of 2018 to 2023, and so now we're going to get an update, and everyone should have a packet. Council Russell and Council Freeman will make sure those packets get put in your mailbox. Thank you.
Thank you. Paige Sansone with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors. I appreciate you having me here tonight. I like being here in person. First change, it's nice. So I am going to walk through this report. There's a lot of numbers in this report, but I'm going to try my best to summarize and just hit the highlights of the report. So I would like to start on page three. The first thing I would like to talk about is the impact to your city with the circuit breakers, because you are, you are impacted there. The chart that you see on the bottom of page three is showing what you're levying in total property taxes and how much you are actually collecting versus what you levy. So if you look at the, at the column on 2021, you are levying about $12.85 million, but you're only collecting $10,890. The rest of that, nearly $2 million, is returned to taxpayers in the form of credits. So said another way, you are not collecting 15.3% of what you levy because of the circuit breaker tax caps. If we were not in the world of circuit breakers, you would have an additional almost $2 million to cover operating expenses. So that's a pretty good chunk of your, of your budget, of your revenue. It's not the worst I've seen in the state, obviously, but you are losing out on 15% of property taxes that you would otherwise collect. If you move on to page number four, that graph is just showing you some history as to where your tax rates have been, where they are now, in addition to your net assessed value. So if you look in 2018, your tax rate was .8150. It's actually decreased since 2018. So here we are in 2021, and your tax rate is .7705. So that's, that's a decrease of 5.5% over that time period. And the contributing factor to that decrease is your growth in net assessed value. So your net assessed value in 2018 was 1.4 billion. It is now almost 1.7 billion. So that's an increase of about 17% over that time period.
You mean million? You said billion?
Billion. Your, your net assessed value is in the billions.
I see, okay.
Yes, yes. So that's great. The growth is really very helpful to either keep your tax rate constant or even a decline, as we've seen here, and it does help that circuit breaker impact. When the, when the net assessed value goes up, the tax rates tend to come down. There's an inverse relationship there. So that's all very good, and we expect continued growth in this area, obviously. So that will be helpful to keep those circuit breaker impacts down. So as far as just overall observations that we saw as we went through these cash flows is that your reserves are pretty strong currently, but as we go out into the future, at least based on what is budgeted, we do see a decline in cash reserves. So we looked at what you're budgeting for 2021 and also what was originally proposed for your 2022 budget, and we do see a significant decline in cash reserves. Now, I will preface that to say that, you know, we are assuming that you will spend every dollar of your budget. So if that's not the case, then maybe the reserves won't go down as drastically as we, as we see there. So let's go ahead onto page five, and, and I can kind of walk through this. Once we get to the individual cash flows, I think it's going to be easier to explain what's happening. So at the top of page five is a graph that includes a number of your, what we call major operating funds. These are funds that primarily fund your city services. You've got a number of funds, but we just selected those few that, that are the primary funding sources. So that would include general motor vehicle highway, parks, those types of funds. So what the graph is showing is kind of some guardrails. The dotted red line at the bottom is what we would call a 15% cash reserve. So we don't want you to fall below that. So when I talk about cash reserves, I'm talking about an ending cash balance that's a certain percentage of your dispersments for the year. So you don't want to fall below 15%. And then the top guardrail is the 50% cash reserve, and that's, that's really ideal. You can go above 50%, sure, but, but really the ideal level is 50%. Anything above 50%, you want to start thinking about utilizing those monies for one-time capital purchases or transferring to rainy day. You've been right in between there. In fact, you've been closer to the top guardrail. So you've had averaged cash reserves in those main operating funds of about 44% of your dispersments. Very strong cash reserves, very strong. But as you see going forward in 2021, at the end of this year, if you were to spend your, all of your budgets as budgeted, your cash reserves would go down to about 11 million, which is a 26% decrease. Then at the end of 2022, again, based on current proposed budgets, your cash reserves would go down to about 5% of your dispersments. So the chart right below that, I think, is a very good summary. It's small, but it's a very good summary of where you are for your 2022 budget. So let me just take a minute to, to walk through that. So I've got your main operating funds listed here in this chart. Column A is what we're estimating your beginning cash will be for 2022. Columns B and C are probably the most important part of this particular table. So B represents the estimated receipts for 2022. So when we talk about balancing the budget, we're talking about matching your dispersments to those estimated receipts. We tend to leave cash reserves out of it, because if you're trying to maintain your cash reserves, that shouldn't be part of the process, right? So right now, we're just comparing columns B and C. So your dispersments as budgeted for the general fund, at least the original, I think there was a new, new set of budget numbers that came out today, late today, but the initial budget was about 27.8 million for the general fund. Your receipts, however, right now, based on our estimates, are only about 24 million. So there is a gap there, and that gap is, is what we're showing in column E for net cash flow. If that net cash flow is negative, it means you're intending to use your cash reserves to fund the budget. Now, if it's one-time capital costs, fine, that's, that's fine. But if you, on a, on a continuing basis, use your cash reserves to fund recurring costs, like salaries and benefits and health insurance, that's where you start seeing the decline in cash over a number of years. In column F is that operating balance percentage. Remember, I said that in, in your major operating funds, you've averaged about 44%? Well, again, based on budgeted numbers, we would anticipate that that reserve level, at least for the general fund, would fall below that recommended minimum of 15%. Can you fund this budget? Yes. But what we try to do when we analyze budgets is try to have you look on a longer term, look beyond 2022, look at that longer term. And if we do that, again, just based on this proposed budget, you would be utilizing those cash reserves. So really, every fund that we analyzed is going to use some, some amount of cash reserves, at least based on this initial proposal. We have a few funds that, as proposed right now, can't be funded. Public safety, local income taxes, one of them. If you look, the, the beginning cash for this year is about eight, I'm sorry, the beginning cash for 2022 is estimated at 835,000. We have estimated receipts of $3.3 million, but the dispersments are well above that. So right now, that budget isn't anticipated to be funded even if you use the cash reserves. And then the, I wouldn't really worry too much about those three funds at the bottom. Those are what appear to be internal service funds, and I think you're going to get the receipts in that correspond with the dispersments, but I need to get some more information from your controller's office. So I guess of these funds, I mean, I would be most concerned about general motor vehicle highway and lit public safety. Those are the big ones, your big operating funds, and those look like they're, they're definitely exceeding the estimated annual receipts for those funds. So, you know, now we can kind of talk a little bit about, okay, how do we bridge those funding gaps? Well, one thing I always recommend, and I know you're early in the process, but look at actual expenditures for 2020, because when I look at actual expenditures for 2020, they appear to be a lot lower than what's budgeted for 2021 and 2022. So I don't know if there's just items that are maybe contingency items in those budgets. I really don't know without doing a deeper dive. But actual dispersments are a great baseline to see what you need going forward, and, and I totally understand there may be some salary increases and things like that built in, and that's fine. Still look at 2020 and then build in those items that you're adding to see if you're still coming close to the, for instance, 27 million that's in your general fund. So you can look at that. Other options, you know, local government, you have few options. You know that, right? You're, you're maxed out at your maximum levy, but there are things called excess levy appeals that you could potentially file for, and we did check on one of them for you. There's an appeal that's pretty common. It's called a three-year growth levy appeal, and if your average three-year growth of net assessed value exceeds the statewide average by 2%, you could be qualified to file that appeal. We did look at that since your, your assessed value's been increasing. You're not quite qualified yet, but you're getting close. So that's one I would check every year during the budget process, because that's a way to permanently increase your maximum levy. And the amount of increase is just going to be based on how much your assessed value's growing, but that is something to look at. Another way to possibly generate some additional revenue would be to establish a municipal wheel tax. Now, that would just be used for the same things that your motor, motor vehicle highway fund is, is currently used for. I know that Purdue did a study back in 2017 for all municipalities that would qualify to adopt that municipal wheel tax, and that study said that you would get $1,630,000 if you would establish that on an annual basis. That's, that's pretty good. You can also, and maybe you already do this, review your charges for services, like for building permits, EMS fees, anything that you charge of service fee, review those on a periodic basis. I know that those fees don't generate a whole lot of revenue, but every bit of revenue helps, especially since costs just continue to rise. So that is something that, that we would recommend, and we have performed fee analysis for cities, so that's something we can assist with if, if you should need that. Other items to look at, I know that you're receiving a payment in lieu of tax from your utilities currently. We can take a look at that to see if you're at the max. If you're not, can the utilities afford to perhaps increase that distribution to the general fund? So that's something that we can look at as well. And then anytime you can utilize your tax increment finance revenue. And then anytime you can utilize your tax increment finance revenues is good. And I know it has to fit in with, you know, it has to be in the TIF area or serve or benefit the TIF area, but anytime we can pay for a capital item out of another fund that's not property tax supported, that would be helpful as well. So those are just some of the things we looked at. We did also, one more thing is we did look at your cumul-, you call it a cumulative capital improvement fund. The DLGF calls it cumulative capital development, and there's a distinction there. I mean, you, it, it looks like it truly is a cum capital development fund and established under that statute, even though you call it cum capital improvement. But this is a great fund because it is outside the levy limits. You can reestablish the rate on this fund. You are currently at .0254. The maximum rate per the statute is five cents. You were at five cents, believe it or not, back in 2002, near five cents. But it appears to have been going down ever since then. And what happens is there's something in the statute that as your assessed value goes up, that tax rate comes down because it's supposed to equalize the levy. But there's also something in the statute that says every year or every, anytime you want, you can reestablish that rate. Yes, it's an overall rate increase. This would be about two and a half cents because you're halfway there. But it, it would generate an additional about 365,000 annually to be used for any municipal purpose unless the council has restricted it here locally. But the statute says that cum capital development can be used for any municipal purpose, not just capital development. So you could use it for operating costs, you could use it for salaries, you can use it for capital items. So that's a great resource for you, and you should know that if you want to reestablish it, there's a small timeframe of opportunity to do that. It's anytime after January, but before May 31st of a given year for the following year. So you could reestablish it at the beginning of 2022 for taxes payable 2023. So there are some options there available for you. So now I may, if I have time, just go through just a few of these major funds, the actual cash flows, just to show you what they look like. I don't need to go through every single one of these, but I, I just want you to familiar, familiarize yourselves with these cash flows so that you understand maybe the detail that goes behind them. So I'm on page 10, and this is your general fund, obviously your biggest fund. So I've highlighted the items that are, that I really want to draw your attention to. So I've got an index over on the left-hand side of the page. So index on line 22 is the operating receipts. So again, we focus heavily on operating receipts because that is kind of the backbone of a balanced budget. So if you look in 2022, we are currently estimating your receipts at almost $24 million. Now, your local income tax, we did get an estimate from the Department of Local Government Finance just recently, and currently their estimate is your local income tax, your certified shares piece is going to go down two and a half percent. We have included that in this cash flow. It's actually on line six. Not a huge decrease. We actually thought we were going to see larger decreases because of COVID, quite frankly, because 2022 local income tax is based on tax returns submitted and filed and, as part of the 2022 tax year, I mean, 2020 tax year. That was COVID. But really, the decrease isn't as significant as we thought. So you are seeing a little bit of a decrease there. So you're looking at about 24 million. How does that compare to your dispersments? What you saw on that summary page, if you look down on line 32, your dispersments are 27,764, at least that was the original estimate. So yeah, you do have that, that, that gap in funding. I, I didn't, was not able to tell from the information that was provided to me how much of that is capital. I doubt that it's 3.8 million in capital. But again, remember, capital items, yes, use your cash reserves. That's what they're there for. But just be careful with your recurring costs and utilizing those cash reserves. And again, when, I help about 80 clients each year with budgeting, and we just tend not to focus on those cash reserves. Now, if the cash reserves are below 15%, then we focus on them because we're like, as part of this budget process, we need to get you above that 15%. But to do that, you're going to have to underspend your receipts. So it gets even harder, you know, to try to balance those budgets. But otherwise, it's pretty simple. We just need to bal-, I say it's simple, it's not really, but just balancing your budget with your receipts is really, is the goal. That's the goal of budgeting. You can see in the past how you've done. You've actually underspent your budget every single year. That's why I'm trying to figure out within that $27 million budget. Maybe there are things that could easily be cut. They're just in the budget that you don't normally spend. I just don't know that. But look, if you look on line 22 and just compare each year, 2018, 22.3 million in receipts, line 32, the dispersments were 20.2 million. So you underspent your budget by 2.3 million. That increased your cash reserves. That's actually a situation where I would say, wow, your budget should have been higher because we're not in the business of saving money. We, we want you to budget what you bring in. So yeah, those three years, I think you could have actually budgeted more. So that's kind of where we're at there. On line 51 is, is the operating balance percentages I had alluded to before. So for general fund, it looks like you were on average about 35% through that, that time period. Very good, very strong. But, but we want to see you stay that way. So page 11 is a chart, and we have the same chart for every fund. And again, it just shows you the guardrails, the, the 15% minimum reserve level, and then the 50% max, and where you've been, right in between. That's where we want you to be. So that, again, historically, you look great, but if we just look at what's being proposed for 2021 and 2022, it looks like you're really going to use those cash reserves. So I mean, that was the general fund. I can go through the rest of these, but that summary page really at the beginning kind of put it all together. I just wanted you to see in these cash flows, each page, kind of how they were set up. We've got a lot of detail there for you to see. I'd like to know what kind of questions or comments, comments you have for me at this point.
So I have a question. So the American Rescue, where are they in this packet?
Yeah, so we did not include the American Rescue Plan Fund within this. Simply, we just don't know what your plans are. We could. Part of the service we provide is we can come out and help you kind of brainstorm what projects would fit in with the guidelines and how you might best leverage those monies. I heard stormwater mentioned and drainage issues. That's an ARPA project. That's the first thing I thought of when, when I heard him speaking about that. So yeah, we will be, we would be happy to help you develop a plan or even help you brainstorm, et cetera. And we can help with compliance issues as well because you'll need to file some reporting with the federal government, so.
Who else has questions? Any other counselors?
Just have a couple. Part of the property tax, I think to the surprise of many over the last couple of years is that it is based on the assessed value, but Marion County Assessor's Office has gotten wise and they've increased the value of many properties. And so I'd just be curious, you know, was that baked into this? That, I mean, there's been a whole new assessment that's gone on up in my area, but I know it's going to hit next year, which is payable in '23. So is that baked into this?
Right.
That's been going on for the last three, four years?
We didn't do anything with, with projecting assessed values, but we can if that's something that interests you. I can tell you that all over the state, I, I hear different things about assessed values. There's a lot of things that go into assessing property, and a lot of it is just, as long as the assessor is following specific guidelines, they have a lot of leeway in assessing property. So some areas of the state, I hear people saying the property isn't assessed enough. It's too low. And then other areas, oh, I think they're assessing too high. So we could certainly do an analysis based on that, if that's something you're interested in.
I just was curious what you're seeing out there.
I'm, I see everything there. It depends on what county I'm in, really, honestly.
Any other questions, Counselor Shovlat? Any other counselors? Counselor Russo-Mora.
I have question clarification. So regarding the assessed valuations, my understanding was that was based on a court case that was brought forth about 15 years ago, and it found that we had assessed our values far too low and improperly, and that's what has caused much of the increased assessed valuations?
Yeah, so, yes, partially. I, I think back in 2003 is when we changed our assessment system because we were assessing property at one-third of true tax value, which is very strange. So you're right, in 2003, now all the assessed values were multiplied by three, but yet our tax rate came down at that time, too. So there was an offset there. There's appeals going on out there that's affecting assessed values, but usually it's going the other way. You know, you've heard of the, the dark box stores or whatever. All of that is happening, but usually that's dropping the assessed value. So our economy is increasing assessed values. We know that. I mean, house prices are skyrocketing if you compare them to last year. So there's a lot of things that impact assessed values. I, I unfortunately don't know specifically what, what is impacting it here in this area.
So let me ask you this question, may I? So when you talk about assessed values, it sounds like it's very fluid and something that we really can't depend on. It really depends on the assessor, so many variables.
Yes.
So would you say tonight that that would not be something that you would suggest? Or should we look at that?
I would say there's a lot about your assessed value that's really out of your control unless, here's some things that are in your control. If, if businesses are coming to you asking for abatements, that's something in your control. But otherwise, I mean, you're really dependent on the assessor's office and, and the, the people they are using to assess properties. It's, it's not something that you can readily control. Now, you bring new development into the city, yes, then you're controlling it. That's something you can control, you're increasing your assessed value. But to focus just on assessed value, I mean, obviously, you've got some good growth here, and it's really maintaining, if not lowering, your rate. So that's good. I, I saw good things when I saw your assessed value. What I wouldn't want to see is your assessed value declining because I know there is growth in that area, in this area. So if I saw that, then yes, I would say you would need to have a study or try to ask questions as to what's happening. But I'm seeing a trend that seems to be reasonable for the growth that you have in this area.
Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Madam Chair. I certainly have a question now, but I, I thank you for your report. There's a lot to digest. So I think later on, maybe the 27th finance, the committee, finance committee meeting on the 27th sometime. I may have some more questions for you then.
Oh, sure, absolutely. Yeah.
If I may, one more question.
Yes, Counselor Russo-Mora.
Just for clarification in your presentation, please correct me where I misunderstood. You were saying that in terms of using any cash reserves for things such as salaries or ongoing annual expenditures, that probably is not the wisest thing to do. You want to use that probably for more a specific capital improvement type project where it has a beginning and end cost and payout and we're done.
Yes, I, I mean, that is our recommendation. Now, if, if we thought that there was going to be a downturn in the economy for a short period of time, then you might have to dip into reserves. And we saw that in 2008, yes. That's why we have rainy day funds. But right now, we don't have that downturn in the economy. So we would suggest, I suggest this for all of my budget clients, don't utilize cash reserves for recurring costs.
Any other, any other counselors?
Madam Chair, I think I do have a follow-on.
Right ahead, Counselor Denny.
If you don't mind. So in your charts, you go on to the end of 2023.
Yes.
Kind of following on to the question you just asked, the 2023 estimates are based on no changes from the 2022 budget.
Right. And, and again, that's why this is still in draft. This is preliminary because we would love to have input from you. Generally, what we do is we'll build in a 3% growth each year. Like, I'll be given your 2022 budget, put that in there, and then I'll add 3% in 2023 and 2024. It didn't seem wise for me to add the 3% because I feel like you're so out of balance currently. So as this, as we get better numbers and as we go through the process, we can update those. That's why it's still in draft.
Okay, thank you so much for your time and for the information. We look forward to hearing from you on the 27th.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a budget presentation video for 2022.
If you remember when we spoke about this last year, we were very cautious and very concerned about what 2022 would look like.
We took a conservative approach to our income tax projections due to the surrounding uncertainty with the COVID-19 pandemic.
I'm happy to say that the dire predictions of what would happen didn't come true. And so much of our revenue sources either remained the same or suffered very little reduction.
We are projecting that our general fund reserve will end at about $9.1 million, allowing us to continue to maintain our 20% reserve.
As a result of that, the budget for this year reflects a minor increase, but the fact that it's an increase at all is a great thing. I'm very proud to present this budget because it does represent, once again, another balanced budget. If you think back now, if we go back to 2016, my first term was all about getting our feet back under us, concentrating on public safety, both police and fire, repairing our IT infrastructure, getting those things taken care of. Now we're investing in the long-term health of our city. We've been doing it kind of piece by piece, remodel of this entire building. So we've become more energy efficient in this building. But more importantly is, is that people who are coming into the city and they need to make a change, whether it's a permit or whether it's a paid water bill, whatever, maybe only have to come to one building. We are intentionally spending and, and investing some more money in the Parks Department. Community Park is going to become the focus park for the city of Lawrence. We host two soccer tournaments there twice a year, at which over 600 teams participate. A lot of people coming into the city of Lawrence. So you want to present your best foot forward. The badly needed repaving of community park will take place in 2022.
The roof of the Stare Center, it's lived its life. We hope to be able to replace it with a more modern product, but still have the architectural appeal that it was built with.
We'll be putting in pickleball courts on Lee Road Park. One initiative right now that's kind of a small one, but it's kind of a big deal is we're going to devote several acres in our parks to improve the survivability of the monarch butterfly.
With the coronavirus pandemic adversely affecting our tax revenues, we were not able to do as much paving this year compared to the previous years. We are planning to do a lot more as part of the 2022 budget so that we can fix a lot more streets next year and make the city look good.
We're using community crossroads grants to help us fund our street repairs. We're doing a lot more strip patching. Our fleet is getting a lot better. It's nice to say now that our oldest truck is a 2017. In 2021, we were able to buy new tire machine, changing machine, state-of-the-art to do aluminum rims, ambulances, all our big trucks. We now have a state-of-the-art tire balancer which balances the tires like it's on the vehicle. We now do in-house vehicle alignment, which is going to save us downtime on the vehicles because we don't have to wait three days to get them fixed. We can pull them in, do them that day, and they're out on the road.
The proposed budget for 2022 is going to allow the men and women of the Lawrence Police Department to continue to deliver professional services to our citizens, to renew our contract for our body-worn cameras, to maintain and actually improve our fleet of police vehicles. And finally, it allows for a compensation package for our employees so that we can recruit and retain the best and brightest employees. It's a very competitive market right now in law enforcement in terms of hiring. So this budget proposal actually allows for a very competitive compensation package.
Working with the controller, we've done a really good job of planning out where the apparatus every five to seven years will be turned over. We have a new engine and new ambulance that will be here after the first year next year. So it's all part of the master plan of replacing stuff that's aged and providing a better service to the community we serve. We're very fortunate to be in an environment right now that we have a strong commitment from our city administration to be more proactive and keep our firefighters safer and provide the best service we can to our community we serve.
For the fifth year in a row, the city of Lawrence has won the GFOA award. They're most impressed with our city controllers to be able to essentially lay everything out on the line for anybody who wants to know how our money's being spent. Now, not even figured into this budget. figured into this budget will be our fund distribution.
Through the American Rescue Plan, the City of Lawrence has been awarded $11.1 million in infrastructure funding.
That's something that I'm very proud of. I worked very hard on for over a year lobbying to get included cities recognized as actual cities.
Our plan is to go after as many matching grants as possible so that we can really ensure we get a lot of infrastructure projects done, and this will be included when creating the ARP budget in 2022.
Thank you so much, Daniel. We are adjourned.